Present with us this evening is Emmanuel Daskalakis, Michael King, Mike Baptiste, and to my right, Richard Swenson, our associate member. If there's anyone recording, would they make it known? There are agendas on the front table if anyone needs them.
I'm Attorney Sheila Tierney. I'm here representing Cedar Village, Inc., and I do have a court reporter here recording proceedings.
The first item of the business is the August 26 minutes. The board's had a chance to look them over. On the page three, regarding the amending the medical marijuana dispensary, it says, "Mr. Titlebaum suggests that moving this law around is not beneficial at this time." Is that... Doesn't seem like a very good way to put it.
I believe he meant the establishment, moving the location of the establishment.
I'm not quite sure that that's the intent that he had in the comment. The way I took it was is that amending or making changes to that law to accommodate a particular vendor in town wasn't the best choice at this time.
That sounds good.
Okay, if you like that, then let's run with that.
One second. Did you write that down? No. Could you repeat that again?
Mr. Titlebaum stated that amending the law to accommodate a single vendor in town was not the best choice at this time.
Yeah. Other than that, anything else? I get a motion to accept as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Next, we have an approval not required plan for map 90, lot 1035, Cedar Village, Inc.,
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering.
I'm Nazir Alcalasi with Cedar Village.
Wade Yakin's with Cedar Village.
For the record, Attorney Sheila Tierney, 26th 7th Street, New Bedford, Mass., and I represent Cedar Village, Inc.
Sorry, I couldn't hear the attorney.
Could you repeat that into the microphone?
I think you're a little too far away from the mic.
Attorney Sheila Tierney, 26th 7th Street, New Bedford, Massachusetts. I represent Cedar Village, Inc.
This Form A plan creates two lots where there is one now. Lot 1035 on map 90 is proposed to be divided into two lots, 1035A and 1035B. There is an existing dwelling on 1035A and an existing foundation on 1035B. The Old Stagecoach Road was recently paved to the front of what's noted the existing foundation number nine. And that's about the extent of it. We feel that there's suitable construction to create legal frontage for the two lots. So we're asking that you approve it as a A&R, approval not required, Form A subdivision.
I'd like to speak a little bit.
Sure.
So this board had previously expressed concerns that Old Stagecoach Road was not accessible, and that was the grounds that you relied upon back in April when you denied the earlier application for the A&R. Since that time, Cedar Village, Inc. has expanded money, some significant amount of money, to purchase an easement and also pave Old Stagecoach Road. They widened it. They took down six large trees. They straightened out the S curve that was of some concern, I believe, to some members of the board. In light of all of that work that's been done, it's our belief that it now qualifies for your endorsement on the A&R. I would point out to your board that the Supreme Judicial Court, I'm not sure if all of the members are aware of this, but the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts this year in June entered a decision concerning an A&R plan and a building permit plan in the city of Brockton. It's the case of RCA Development versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Brockton. And in that decision, the court was addressing general laws, Chapter 41A, Section 81L, which talks about the provision that I believe you were relying upon previously, that if it's an application for the division of attractive land into two or more lots, that is on a way shown on a plan, excuse me, on a way that was in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town in which the land lays, having, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land, abutting thereon or served thereby. And in that particular case, the SJC said that the A&R should have been endorsed and a building permit had to be granted by the town of Brockton. I believe in your earlier decision, you seemed to be under the impression that you could require the petitioner to comply with the subdivision rules concerning a road. And that is not what the law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts actually is. Under the law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as set forth by the SJC, the accessibility that you're required to evaluate for the road that has the frontage is accessibility to the purpose that the lots that would be developed would be using. And in this particular case, it's clear that Old Stagecoach Road has been in use for a very significant amount of time. I think the last time you had your hearing, you talked about a property that had been in existence there, I think, for well over 100 years. We have done further research, and we have determined, and I have here for consideration by the board, the listing of... If I may have a minute. The listing of the public safety calls that have traveled down Old Stagecoach Road, and those have consisted of the police and also EMS, and I believe the fire department. And I've made a couple of copies of this for the board's consideration, but it does show that there have been a number of instances when public safety vehicles have historically traveled down Old Stagecoach Road, and that was prior to all of the improvements that the petitioners have made to Old Stagecoach Road. In addition, my clients have contacted... And this was all done, just so that the board is clear, this was all done by my clients so that they could address concerns that you raised the last time we were in front of you. So we also have email from the Lieutenant Walter Correa, who is the Public Safety Officer for the Town of Police for the Town of Wareham. And in this email, he indicates that there are no public safety access concerns for Old Stagecoach Road, either from the police's perspective or from the EMS director, Mr. Evans', perspective. And I will submit this for your consideration as well.
Do you want to see this, Charlie?
No, that's okay.
We have also brought with us, in case if anyone has not had the opportunity, to take a view of what Old Stagecoach Road looks like now, since my clients have done the work, we've brought a number of photographs that I would like to submit to have made part of the record. And I have a series of photographs that show... I have a series of photographs that show what Old Stagecoach Road used to look like and what it looks like now, including some photographs that show two large trucks on the now paved road abreast of each other to show that there's plenty of room for two large-sized trucks to pass. It also shows... It also shows that the curve and the trees that had been of concern, I believe, to this board, the trees have been removed, and the curve has been straightened out and widened. I would point this board to the case of Ball versus the Planning Board of Leverett, which is at 58 Mass. App Court, 513. It's a 203 case, which basically says in relevant part, where there's access that a public way normally provides, that is where the street is of sufficient width and suitable to accommodate motor vehicle traffic and to provide access for firefighting equipment and other emergency vehicles, the goal of access under the subdivision control laws is satisfied, an endorsement of approval not required, A&R is required under the law. I also would point this board to the case of Gates versus the Planning Board of Dayton, which basically, in that case, the court talked about access where you think the access might be better, or could be better, or could be improved upon, as long as the access is manageable versus illusory, then the access is sufficient, and it would warrant an A&R endorsement. And that adequate access references access that's adequate for vehicular traffic to the lots that are being proposed. So in the particular case that you have in front of you, as you know, on Old Stagecoach Road, there are already in existence three homes that are occupied and that have been in existence on that property, one, you know, for a very long period of time, and the other two, I believe, more recently. My client's A&R application is to divide it so that there would be two single-family homes, one that's already constructed, the second has the foundation built upon it. So you're talking about adding in two additional homes. I believe we've provided you with sufficient evidence to show that even prior to my client's improvement of Old Stagecoach Road, it was sufficient for public safety vehicles to get down to the houses that were there. We've showed you the call list. We've provided you with an email from both the police safety officer, including his conversations with the EMS officer, saying that from their perspective, there's no concern about public safety access. And clearly, based upon the photographs that we've provided to you, the ability to access this area to my client's proposed separate lots has been greatly improved by the fact that he's paved the road, he's graded it, he's widened it, and he's removed the trees that were of concern to the board previously. We do have present with us, and I will submit them to you so that they can be made a part of the record, a number of instances of A&Rs that have previously been granted by the town of Wareham for properties that contain access roads that are nowhere near as wide, graded, or constructed with, you know, the asphalt as Old Stagecoach Road now is. There's a number of properties that have had a number of A&Rs granted off of dirt roads and roads that are not as wide and not as good as Old Stagecoach Road currently is. And those would include a multiple number of A&Rs that were granted for properties off of Squirrel Island Road, Tohonet Road, Murphy Street, and Fanny's Lane. And I do have here to be submitted to the record this evening, both photographs of I would also just point out, for your information, the case that I was talking about that just came down in June, the RNC Development versus the Zoning Board for the Board of Brockton, in that particular case, the SJC actually said that someone who owns a lot, who wants to divide it into two separate lots, no longer has to apply to any board in order to get the board's approval, that they can do that kind of a division simply by executing a separate deed. But in our particular case, you know, we are seeking the A&R endorsement from this board. We believe with the improvements that have been made to the property, that we've addressed your concerns. We think it's clear that the access is now appropriate, and there are no safety concerns, and we're requesting that the board grant and endorse the A&R. And I do have, in case you're interested, a copy of that June SJC case.
So by your own description, you've purchased access across Old Stagecoach Road and constructed a subdivision roadway. Why isn't this a Form C?
It's not a Form C because it doesn't fall under the requirements for a Form C. You can't, in our opinion, under the law, require the petitioners to conform with all of the requirements that deal with the road and putting in a road under the subdivision rules when they fall within the rules relating to the ANC, where they clearly have the frontage, where they have the square area that they're required to have, and where the access is on a pre-existing road, a pre-existing way that was in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision rules by the town of Wareham. And under that circumstance, what you can look at is the accessibility of the road. And I believe we're showing you with what we've introduced tonight, that there is accessibility under this road that meets the requirements of Massachusetts law, because we've clearly shown that public safety cars and vehicles have had the ability to go down the road. We have documentation from them that they're saying they have no concerns for public safety access to this road. We've improved it so that it's even less of an issue if it ever were one. And the case law doesn't say that the road has to be perfect or has to be up to the standards of the subdivision rules. The case law says you have to be able to find that there's accessibility for the purpose for which the road would be intended, which would be to provide access to the two lots that my client would be adding to Old Stagecoach Road, and to allow cars to go down there for the people who resided at the properties, to allow public safety cars to go down there, which clearly they can, to allow fire, EMS, safety, police, et cetera.
But you still had to purchase access to your property?
No, he had access to Stagecoach Road from the purchase that he initially had.
No, it was denied several years ago because he did not...
No.
This particular piece of property did not contact Stagecoach Road.
Yes, it does.
It didn't at the time. Now he owns both sides.
Yes, yes.
Several years back. It's not really pertinent tonight.
Well, then, if you're saying it's not really pertinent tonight, then I would suggest it's not something that really can be considered by this board respectfully.
Well, I didn't want to stray too far, so I cut it off. But I still fail to see where you can go in, purchase access from somebody else, and construct a roadway, and not call it a subdivision.
Because that's not what he did. He didn't purchase access from someone else. He had...
What was the easement you referred to?
He had, the easement was for a higher portion of the road, even though he has access from his property to Old Stagecoach Road. But when they appeared before you the last time, the concern was, you thought at one portion of the road, it was too narrow, that it was almost... You didn't use the words, but I'm assuming you were thinking it was almost a little bit of a bottleneck. So he...
Excuse me, I wasn't there at that hearing, so...
And I watched it on video, so... So to address the concerns, he got an easement. So he didn't buy the property, he got an easement, and he paved the property, he paved the road, Stagecoach Road, down through where his properties are. And I don't know, I mean, have people, have you been to see it, the members of the board, what it looks like now? So one...
Not been there.
Two members of the board.
Three.
So I'm glad we brought the photographs, because I think you can see from the photographs that it's changed significantly from the way that it looked at the time that I believe that you expressed your concerns.
And I'm not opposed to someone using their property and subdividing their property. I just don't want to see any headaches created for future buyers with title issues or anything like that. That's my question.
I don't, well, I don't know how that would happen, because they actually have a purchaser. There's been a title examination that's been done, and that's not something that's been raised by the purchaser. And he has title insurance for the land that the building is located on.
I'm very fuzzy on the easement. I see it on the map. Can you just walk me through that a little bit to give me some clarity?
Sure. I think you're talking about the one... Where on the plan are you talking about?
I see an easement mentioned on number seven, right about in the middle, or just past the home.
Is that this one? Is this one?
No, the easement that's referenced on the plan is an easement, so-called 20 and 40-foot right-of-way easement, and it's explained in Note 3, which is in the upper left-hand corner of the plan. So that easement, which is depicted on this plan, is separate and different than the easement that they just referred to, which enabled the improvements, the removal of the trees, and the improvements to the road on the Florindo property.
Because they had a right of way. They had a right of way all along, but with the right of way, they didn't have the legal right to just go in and cut down trees that were on the property. So they had to get the easement in order to cut down those six trees that we referenced so that they could straighten out that section of the road that was sort of like a curve around the trees. And that's what that easement allowed them to do.
So to be clear, there was, there's two easements called out here, a 20 and a 40, right? On the drawing.
Correct.
Referenced in, you're referencing Note 3 for both of those. Is there another easement?
The first lot, when you come in, Mr. Adam Johnson, this is the one we had to buy because we did not own the fee. We have the right, but right of way, but we did not own the fee. So in other words, we can't move or cut trees. So we had, we purchased from the gentleman, Mr. Adams, the right to cut the trees and straighten out the curve. But we had the right of way, but we did not own the fee, if you all understand the fee.
I do. That was, that's what I needed to hear.
That's why we had to purchase from him. We didn't to cut those trees.
And that's all locked and done?
I have a copy of it. It's been recorded, if you want to see it.
Oh, that's fine.
And that was done in May. The end of May.
Charlie, you have any comments? If I remember right, Charlie, our main discussion was about the quality of the road, and did it meet the conditions outlined in the subdivision law?
Well, what, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. First of all, with respect to a comment that the attorney made through one of the cases, that somebody can divide property without creating a plan, that's correct, although the rules or regulations of the Registry of Deeds sort of guide how that gets done. It's either a portion of the property that is on record already, or it's the same property as, or it's shown on a plan that was previously approved that's on record. There are two or three different ways that you can do it, but I think that's immaterial in this particular case. And I don't think it matters whether or not easements were purchased. I think the question remains, under what portion of the subdivision control law can one go in, make improvements on a previously unimproved road, and then come in and claim that those improvements are sufficient that you should sign the plan as an A&R endorsed plan? Because in my view, the only... Because in my view, the only authority to do that comes from your Board. And your Board sets the provisions or the criteria under which that construction gets done. And it gets done through the subdivision process. And that's the question that remains in my mind as to whether or not it's appropriate, in this case or any other case, to simply, you could cut a swath through the woods, construct it, and then come in with a plan that says A and R and says, well, my plan conforms. Well, conforms to what? To my knowledge, there's been no inspection of that construction. It was never under covenant. No inspections were done to see what was, what was built or whether the line and grade is right. So that, that would be the concern that I have. It has less to do with the fact that there are easements here, more to do with the process in which these, these improvements were made, and whether it's a legitimate thing to do it and then claim that you've got A and R authority to do so. That's where the problem is that I see.
I'd like to speak to that. I think that completely ignores Chapter 41, Section 81L, that talks about that C provision, which is when you have a way that was in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town in which the land lies. Because clearly, in the hypothetical that he just provided to you, he said somebody would go out in the woods and cut a swath and then later come back in and say, we're going to improve it, et cetera. That's not the case here. Old Stagecoach Road has been a way that's been in existence in Wareham for clearly over 100 years. Because I think you already have documentation that says that the house down at the end was built in 1880, I believe, was the year that I saw on the videotape. So under that circumstance, then the road itself is not subject to whatever requirements you might have set forth in the subdivision rules that were passed subsequent, you know, well after the road was in existence. All you can do is look at whether the road meets the needs of the vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land. And that was just set forth again by the SJC in this RCA case. And if you refer back to the Ball case, the Ball case clearly states that where there is the access that a public way normally provides, that is where the street is of sufficient width and suitable to accommodate motor vehicle traffic and to provide access for firefighting equipment and other emergency vehicles, the goal of access under 81M is satisfied and an 81P endorsement is required. And clearly, with having at least three houses that are already occupied on this road, there's been motor vehicle traffic going back and forth on Stagecoach Road. We've provided you with documentation to prove that there has been public safety vehicle traffic on Old Stagecoach Road. We've provided you with the email that says that the safety officer for the town of Wareham sees no problem with public access to this road, and also the EMS sees no problem with public access to this road. So we believe we've met the requirements to get your endorsement on this A and R plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You reference the police and EMS, but you, you don't have anything concerning fire?
Well-
And, and to be honest, if there was anything that was going to tax that road as far as accessibility goes, it would be fire apparatus.
I believe at least one of those calls on the log that I provided to you was fire.
It doesn't say that, though.
Well, I, I believe that it is, one of the calls was fire. But I think you also have the difficult situation of having the head of the fire department in your town being related to the person who serves as your consultant engineer. So I think that's-
Is that why you didn't approach them?
That's a stretch.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, I think that's a conflict of interest, but, you know, he did not respond, as you can see from the email, he didn't respond back to the, the safety officer for the town of Wareham, who contacted him and asked him for his opinion.
If I might, the email is dated Friday, September 6th. Why wait till the 11th hour to, to reach out to fire?
If I may, if I may, please.
Of course.
Can you please come forward, Kristin? Tell what, when did we go and when did he confirm? And he refused to go inspect. With all the respect.
Kristin Tobia, I work for Cedar Village Incorporated. On Friday, I went and saw Chief Rowley. And the answer that I received from him when I asked him when fire would be out there, because I knew that safety had and EMS had, he told me that the fire department had absolutely nothing to do with road commission, that it was all up to the planning board, amongst other things.
And you went and saw him on Friday?
I went and saw him on Friday, but two weeks ago, the safety officer, I was informed, if you look at the, the email, he informed me that he and Evans sent an email to Chief Rowley letting them know that there were no concerns, safety concerns on their part, meaning safety and EMS. And they were waiting for him to go out and inspect, and they, he would let the road commission know so that for the next hearing, it could be heard. That is protocol, that is what he has been doing since he was the safety officer. That's what they do. It's him, EMS, fire, road commission. I was told by the fire chief that he has nothing to do with it, that it's your Board that decides that.
Okay. Doesn't the Wareham Fire have an actual safety officer, somebody other than the chief?
I believe it is Lieutenant Smith.
Okay, so.
And I believe Lieutenant Smith was involved in this as well.
But we don't have any correspondence going back and forth?
I don't have correspondence with that.
Well, the chief, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, the chief will have to order the inspection to him. So if he never allow him to go, he's not going to go, or any, or told him.
I'm not 100% sure that the chief would actually, I, I got a belief between smoke detector inspections and all the different things that the safety officer's job entails. I, I don't believe the chief would be setting up an agenda for him to deal with this.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. But he was informed by Lieutenant Korea two weeks ago when Lieutenant went inspect, and Kristin was there, and he said he was not going there.
Okay, but we don't have anything in writing stating that?
No, you just have May.
You have, so if, you know.
So you have her testimony. You have my testimony.
Understood, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you have, I think it's referenced on the email, I believe, isn't it?
It is referenced. It's not referenced that they would not go out and inspect. Just that you were waiting for them.
It's referenced that-
But it was also Friday at 3:55. I mean, that is, for, for a subject that started weeks ago, as far as I'm concerned about access, it does seem like the 11th hour to be kind of following up on that detail.
Well, just so that the record is perfectly clear, it's his email to Kristin dated Friday, September 6th. And in that, he tells her, and I quote, "I wanted to let you know that I sent email to both Chief Rowley of the Wareham Fire Department and Director David Evans of Wareham Emergencies and Medical Services."
I see that, but there's no-
And he doesn't, he doesn't say when he emailed them.
Correct, right. There's, there's no dates referenced.
Right, so I don't think you can make the inference that he emailed them only on Friday, September 6th.
But we don't have anything to-
Yeah, actually, we do. Mr. King, we do. We have, when he emailed her three weeks ago, he said he informed the fire department. If you don't believe Lieutenant Korea, I don't know what to say, but she-
I don't know Lieutenant Korea, so I'm not going to pass judge.
I don't know him either. He's, but we called the police department, he said that he's the person to inspect. We don't know him either, so. But that's when we, when we contacted him, he went inspect, and he informed us with the email on the phone. She could read it.
Yeah, there's a, there's a text from Lieutenant Walter Korea to-
August 26th.
-her dated August 26th, that he had gone down to Old Stagecoach Road on Thursday, and will do a letter later today, and he'll speak with Wareham Fire. But I don't see any public safety issues with access to the location.
Okay. I mean, I, I understand his opinion from EMS because ambulances are, are somewhat compact. It's not like trying to get a pump or a ladder down that road.
Well, I would point out that, you know, the lumber trucks had to go down Old Stagecoach Road in order to bring in all the lumber for the construction of the property. Those are pretty big trucks, as were the concrete trucks that went down Old Stagecoach Road for the pouring of the foundations.
But you mentioned, emergency access, to me, is academic. They're going to get to wherever they have to get regardless of road conditions. You mentioned public way. And one of the standards, or one of the three standards of an ancient way is, has to be certified by the town clerk on another approved, shown on another approved plan, and there was one other method of demonstrating its existence, which escapes me at the moment. I don't know if you met any of those criteria in the first hearing, or whether you were even asked, but, but it's incumbent upon the applicant to show that this was a way.
Well, I believe, I believe that was addressed in the first hearing, and I believe it was accepted by the Board that it was a way, if I recall correctly from my viewing of the tape. I wasn't involved in the first hearing, but I believe it was accepted by the Board that it was accepted as a way.
If I, if I may, my recollection is, is that we were focused on paragraph D in the subdivision bylaws, which talks to, in a way, existence prior to May 11th, 1951, having, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grade, and adequate construction to provide for the need of vehicular traffic, blah, 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 blah.
I believe the third one was maintained by the town, set-
It's a public way, one that the town clerk certifies, a way shown on a plan that was previously approved and endorsed with the subdivision control law, or D, and existing prior to 1951, that in our opinion, and that's, that's the words used in our, in our subdivision bylaws, is adequate. And that was, and our ruling at that time, if I remember correctly, was that the road was not adequate. Now, I've driven the road, and there have been improvements, but to Charlie's point, which I agree with Charlie, is that I would like, I would have liked my, our town engineer to watch that road being built. I've seen him, I've seen him inspect other roads as they're being built to, to see how good they are, but at a minimum, I, I need that road looked at by an engineer.
Well, to, to that point, I don't know whether counsel saw the road before those improvements were made, but I did, having lived in this area for a number of years. With respect to the fire chief, I proudly say he's my son, and he can make up his own mind and he can say what he wants to say. I have nothing to do with that. He's his own man, and I respect him for that. With respect to what I said with, in, in terms of the, being an old road, and I made the point that it would be the same thing as someone cutting a brand-new road through the woods and then claiming construction. Essentially, that's what's happened here because, as you all know, having seen it before anything took place, it was a dirt road, and you made a determination before anything came before you on this, that that construction was not adequate. In the meantime, these instruction, these improvements were made. Now, with respect to your thought, Richard, I think it would be appropriate for me to go out, or to any other consultant to go out, and simply inspect the construction that someone does on their own, and then bring in a report to this Board and say, it's fine, it meets your subdivision standards, where there's been no public hearing, there's no application before you, there's no contact with the abutting owners, the way that the subdivision control law calls for it. I know of no provision in the state statute, Chapter 41, or your own rules or regulations, that says you can go and do construction, whatever you want to do, and then come back and claim that it's an A and R, irrespective of whether the access is different today than what it was six months ago. I don't believe that's the way that the statute was intended to be written in the first place. And I don't believe that's the way that it's intended here.
And respectfully, I will, I will again state to this Board, this is not, this, this does not fall under the definition of a subdivision, and I would request that you read the SJC's decision in the RCA development case, because you're trying to impose subdivision rules and regulations on a case that is not a subdivision, on a case that falls within the exception because of the fact that this was a pre-existing road that was in existence at the time that the town adopted its subdivision rules. So-
Can you provide us with enough reference so that we can go read that?
Absolutely. Here's a copy of the decision.
Richard, if I may, I don't want to see that, so don't bring it this way. Madam, are you the attorney who represents the plaintiff in the litigation against the planning board?
No, I am not.
Okay. There is litigation, as you know.
Right.
And thank you for all your input, but you have mentioned so much legality that I'm intimidated. And I cannot participate in this discussion without our own counsel being present or getting advice from our counsel. Thank you for the information. I, I cannot participate.
Okay, and I'm just, just for the record, I would state for the record that I don't believe that the litigation matter that's pending has anything to do with this application. This is a completely separate application.
I can't decide that, and I cannot evaluate the comments which you in good faith have made. I have to have our counsel advise us. Thank you.
Fine.
What was the name, project that was before us a few months ago, where there was a house at the far end of the road? It was, um, open space. And he wanted to put one home in. Was it Farmer's Lane? Or what would make this different from Farmer's Lane, where the gentleman came before us? It was an existing road that led, it was kind of a dead end. It went to one house. He put a house, a lot on the left and built the, or wanted to build a home there. And he was, he had to supply stormwater control, road construction specs, and that was only for one home. How would it differ from this?
Well, I think the main thing is that is that way Farmer's Lane is shown on approved subdivision plan.
Okay.
Farmer's Way used to go all the way down to Fairon Hill Road, a long time, on the old, old town plan. Judge, from where we stand now, I think you should take the consensus of the Board, whatever we do or whatever we, however we move, town council's got to be involved. There's no way in heck we're going to make a decision today on Form A.
Well, I was going to, I was looking for the timeline where we are time-wise as far as a decision.
Well, they, they got two choices, grant us an extension or withdraw without prejudice.
I don't know that you can extend an A and R.
I'm, I'm not ready to move on this.
You have, you have 21 days from the date of filing, and I believe the statute says it's filed, is it tonight?
Tonight?
No, I believe it was filed around, honor, about August 27th.
28th, with the town.
I think the actual filing takes place when it comes before this Board.
Why don't you count and figure out where we are, Judge, and we'll go from there. Because I'm, I don't plan on sitting here all night going back and forth, throwing stones over the fence at each other. We're not going to accomplish anything.
You've given us so much information to chew on here. If you, that's a pocket, filed with, with the planning board, which is, I think, is what the verbiage says.
The statute says within 21 days of the submittal.
Submittal to the planning board, which is this evening.
Well, it says it shall within 21 days of such submittal. Give written notice of its determination.
I think that would benefit both the applicant and the board, if it was interpreted as tonight, so that we could do some research between now and our next meeting. Which will be the 23rd.
Let me check and see if I, if there's a case that construes.
Mr. Buckland, do you know the, of the rules? Are you, do you know of the rules, if it wants submitted, or when we come first hearing?
My interpretation has always been that it's with the filing, with the town clerk.
I think that I would agree with that.
Doesn't necessarily mean I'm right.
Yes.
But if it doesn't, if it doesn't...
Past practice here has been when it's been submitted to the board.
If it doesn't give you 21 days to respond, I mean, it could be filed, such as you could never hear it, within the 21 days. It doesn't make any sense.
That's why we, I think it's in our rules and regs, it's submittal to the board. For that reason, if we only meet twice a month, you could very easily file your plans where they would get no scrutiny.
So your rules and regulations say, once the application is considered complete by the planning board staff, it shall be stamped with the date and time of filing by said board, and at such time shall be considered filed.
Right, so that would be tonight.
Do you have a stamp on that, Ken?
It's on page five of your...
I never made the determination of completeness.
So what are the two dates in question, tonight or when?
23rd.
Tonight or the 28th?
So if, if it's the 28th, we're not gonna have 21 days, and it's gonna be a constructive grant. Ain't gonna happen.
So for the purposes of this particular issue, can we, can we say that the filing date was tonight, and we have until the next meeting?
Today's the...
Today's the 9th.
And the 21, you're saying you want until September 30th to render a decision? Is that what you're saying to me?
Well, our next meeting is the 23rd.
I'm sorry?
14, our next meeting in 14 days.
The 24th would be when we file with the town clerk.
My clients indicate that would be okay with them.
It's extended to the 24th.
Of September.
Of September, 2019.
Right, and that's when we would have a decision?
That's when you'd have a decision filed.
Yeah, I don't think the 24th is right.
Be filed the next day.
So 9/23 meeting, and then you're saying it would be filed 9/24? Okay.
Is that right?
According to my clients, yes.
Sure, I think that would be best for all.
I, I think, in order for that meeting...
No offense, but I think that could save unnecessary litigation.
I'm always in favor of saving unnecessary litigation, as someone who litigates all the time.
But during this, during this time, will an inspection be made?
Right, that's what I was gonna suggest. I think before that next meeting, it would be in everybody's best interest to have the road inspected for construction, 'cause you, you had made reference to a suitable access. But the question in my mind is suitability by whose standards?
And...
Right, it's a subjective statement. It's suitable according to me. I think it looks great, but I don't know anything about road construction. So I would think it would make sense to have it inspected by the town engineer, or somebody of like qua qualifications. And I'd like to see, along with that, some sort of letter from the fire department, either stating that they have inspected it for access, or they declined to inspect it and consider it completely accessible.
Well, respectfully, I think you may be able to get that easier than, than we. You may be able to get that?
No, I, I, I don't believe that. I, I think if you walk, or call, and talk to the safety officer, and explain to them that you have a project in front of the board, and that it requires them signing off, or, or declining to sign off on an inspection, I, I don't see where they would have an issue with that, quite honestly.
Well, I'm a little concerned at what appears to be letters generated by town employees that were not requested by this board. I don't know if they were requested by their superiors, or, you know, that bothers me, that type of correspondence, not, not in this particular case, but that kind of correspondence has gotten the town into hot water in the past.
If I may interrupt, Mr. Chairman. Again, Kristen Tobia. I had asked Lieutenant Correa several times how things were going, because I wanted to be prepared for this meeting. I asked him many, many times, and I don't think that he was doing anything out of the ordinary by answering me.
I don't know how that would affect this particular case, but I know instances in the past where employees have done that, and it caused problems. So that's nothing, that's no reflection on you folks? You're just trying to get your work done?
No, I'm not worried about a reflection on me.
But it is, it is a situation that the town should address and cover broadly.
Okay, so...
It's nothing to do with this project...
I, I understand that.
...with you, you...
So what I wanna ask from you now is, in light of you having said that, are you going to be the person who's going to contact the fire department?
Yes, I'll do that.
So we will not have the responsibility of contacting the fire department?
Normally, the plans are submitted and dispersed to the departments, and a report is generated. That's, you know...
Well, and I will tell you, with respect to the call logs, that's public record, so we're entitled to get that under the Freedom of Information Act.
I'm not worried about that. I just, and I don't find any fault with what you folks did, you trying to advance your, your project. You would have no way of knowing, you know, what the protocol at least should be.
Okay, so you're gonna handle the fire department?
And I'm sure on their end, on Walter's end, or whoever did it, maybe it's done all the time that way.
Okay.
It's just... A motion to continue to the 23rd?
After we get a letter of extension.
Again, you can't extend an A and R. So I think we're just in agreement that tonight is the night of the filing, and they have 20, 21 days from here.
Do they agree on that, on the filing? You're not gonna come back tomorrow and say that?
They've, they already stated they agreed to.
They've stated it.
I, I stated on, I stated on the record that my clients were in agreement that you would have the meeting on September 23rd, and you've indicated that you would have a decision on September 24th. And I believe one of your board members also indicated that apparently what we submitted was never stamped. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, um...
Stand by who?
By your department.
File for, check for completeness and...
You know, on, on page five of your, of your rules and regulations, page five, paragraph...
I think we're good.
Paragraph two? It doesn't appear that that was complied with, but we're in agreement.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you. Again, a motion to continue to the 23rd?
So moved.
Thank you. Sarah Second?
Second.
Motion made by Manuel, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Did you pass it? No materials ever handed out?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have the call logs?
I'm gonna keep mine. It's probably cracking.
Oh, there's someplace down there, sure.
The pictures?
Did I hand in the doubles?
The next item of business is a discussion on Spring Avenue regarding the proposed changes.
Okay, we still didn't make a decision whether it was a major or minor.
Exactly.
Right, and I, I think we tried to give the impression that, at least I felt anyway, I thought it was a major change from what it was originally stated.
I think there was a concern about parking. This is with, with...
Updated plan.
Doing away with the garages.
Yeah. Initially, we had, we had issue about the sand pipe at one time. Remember that?
Go ahead.
Matt Sheridan, president of Sheridan Home Builders. I was in a couple weeks ago, as you guys know, showing you my thoughts for how I'd like to change what had previously been approved, and I heard everybody's concerns with the parking, with the lack of garage. I redesigned a new floor plan with the garage, again, not changing the footprint of what had already been approved. One of the other members was concerned with, well, does it fit the neighborhood? So I went and took pictures of all of the houses within a block of where these builds would be taking place, to show that majority of the neighborhood is ranch-style homes. So in doing that, the, the two biggest concerns I really heard were the, the parking concern, which I tried to adjust, address with keeping the garage, not changing the existing site plan, not changing the footprint of the house in any way that the board had already approved, and the overall makeup of the neighborhood as it currently is.
So to be clear, these pictures here that we're looking at are, are homes in the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
And we're seeing many one-story ranges?
Yes, sir.
And an occasional two-story?
And the only two-story is actually directly across the street, and it's a, a bank foreclosure that I do have an interest in. What had previously been approved was over 2,000 square foot, two-story colonial that is only two bedrooms, which I just personally feel does not fit or benefit the area. I see homes being built, and there not being any suitable buyers for them. The biggest thing I was trying to achieve was not changing the footprint of what you guys had already approved with the site plan, just to, I understand it looks drastic, but to try to keep it as simple as possible.
So if I remember right, one of the concerns I heard, and, and it wasn't mine, but someone brought it up, correct me, you were going to tax the central parking area with eight more cars that used to be in garages?
Correct, sir, because the original design I brought in, I eliminated the garage.
Right.
So I brought in a new design, showing a garage, so that way the parking situation didn't change from what the board had previously approved.
So now you have space for two cars for each dwelling?
Yes, sir, and guest parking.
Yeah, so that...
Original was two-car garages?
Original was no garage?
The original one, the original approved was a one-car garage. The one I brought in two weeks ago didn't show a garage.
Yes.
And the board had a concern about, well, you lost a parking spot.
Yes.
So that's why I redesigned the house with the garage, so that way everybody has two parking spots, plus the guest parking.
So this is a third version?
No, sir. That's the, only the second version I've brought before you.
But it's the third. You have the initial...
Oh, oh, yes, yes, the initial one approved, the one I'm trying to take a mulligan on right now, and that one.
Being a, a single floor plan, you're targeting 55 and older, 60-ish?
Yes, sir.
So you're back to two stories?
No, it's still single, single story. The design you see, I just wanted you to have what had been previously approved.
Okay.
So you could see it had a garage and everything else.
I, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Well, the, well, the original, original was that. First determination you need to make is if you consider this a major or a minor change from the original floor plan.
Okay, so we're going from this to this?
All right, so let's be real clear here, 'cause I get confused.
Yes, sir.
That's, that was, this is your original.
That's original from over a year ago.
That is currently approved.
Yes, sir.
And this is the new one?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
How do we define major?
I don't know, but there's not a whole lot of difference here.
No, I was gonna say, the footprint's the same.
Yeah.
And the garage space is the same.
But I think it's less than what was originally approved, as far as...
Yeah.
Building mass and...
Yeah, and occupancy potential. I mean, this has less occupancy potential than the original.
Keeping with the neighborhood?
Yeah. Can I make a suggestion from an old guy's standpoint?
Yes, sir.
The front of the house, where you have the entry door?
Yeah.
Is there any consideration of putting a covered porch over the front of that?
Yes, sir. If the board wanted to see the front of the house dolled up, I'd certainly be more than willing to do that.
Well, the only reason I mention it is, is being an old guy. I love sitting in my rocking chair on my covered porch.
Maybe I'll feel that when I get to be as old as you.
My wife and I sit down, out there every night and watch the sunset. So I... So, from a marketability standpoint, I think that would be a big up by having some sort of a covered porch. I mean, certainly wouldn't be part of an approval, but just as an observation.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
So Emmanuel, to your question, and forgive me for being new to the game, but is there a definition of major and minor?
Determination of the board...
It's subjective, yeah.
Okay.
Visually, it's major.
Now, I want to point out, of course, that the... There's also a difference, not only in the plan itself, but in the process. A major modification would be one that you'd want to take to a public hearing and have a public review, as well as the board's review.
I don't see, honestly, my opinion, I don't see that being the case.
I consider this a minor.
Yeah, I would too. I mean, if anything, the original approved design is too much for the neighborhood based on the pictures you've shown us.
Yes, sir, that's my feel.
Do you have any comments, Charlie?
So long as there aren't any site changes from the first plan, I'm fine.
Let's see, it's the same roof area, so it's the same grade.
Yeah. As long as there weren't great changes that are different.
Exterior has not changed at all?
No, the existing site plan remained.
I do think a little... A little better treatment over the doors would probably make it more marketable. It's a little stacked.
We got some rocking chair right there.
Put the king in.
So...
So are you looking for an approval?
No. What we're looking for is whether or not it's a major or minor modification. If we believe it's a minor modification, and so it can be approved that way, what we have to do is check in with the owner of the property and allow that the changes can be made.
I already have Mr. Hab's consent.
We don't have that in writing yet. What we all have is in writing is something from Mr. Hab that says, "By no means do I want any changes approved without my written consent to the changes."
Okay.
So if I understand what you just said, we can approve this as a minor tonight, go to Mr. Hab and say, "We've approved this as a..." "We're willing to approve this as a minor with your blessing," right? Or we're calling it a minor, now it's up to you to bless it, and we move forward.
Correct. Then we can modify the special permit.
So I'd make the motion...
I would say a motion to consider the changes, the final changes submitted to us to be considered as a minor modification.
Very well said.
Was that a so moved?
That was a so moved, yes.
So will it be okay if I have Mr. Hab email Mr. Buckland?
Sure, or a phone call.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mike King, seconded by Emmanuel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ken, am I correct that that requires a document for the board to sign? For the modification?
I think that'd be appropriate, since it's a special permit.
That way, you can re-site the redesign of the buildings, become a part of the public record.
We'll need Mr. Hab's approval before we do that.
You'll have that tomorrow for the next meeting, or whatever?
Change them?
Should we?
If it's just to maybe simplify this for everybody, Mr. Buckland, I'm closing on the property on September 24th. So would it be easier for everybody if I just came in after the 24th, and then we should be good to go?
Your choice.
I'm just trying to keep it as simple for everybody as possible. Whatever you guys prefer, I'm fine with.
There's no... We can't reference this, there's nothing to...
There's not a date on the plan?
I was gonna say we could approve it.
Pending...
The owners approve, sign it. How do we identify this?
Plan when it's not...
Just sign it.
Sign the plan itself.
I think you'll improve your marketability.
If you use my likeness in the marketing materials, you know.
Then you're gonna have your belly up for sure.
I did reference the... I did sign a copy of the plans. If you'd like to approve them pending the approval of the owner. Send a motion to...
Make a motion to approve pending the approval of the landowner?
Is there a second?
Don't leave me hanging.
Motion made by Mike King, seconded by Richard Swenson. Swenson, sorry. Keep doing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So that way, if Mr. Hab gets... Gives his blessing, then you can move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and vote on explanations for town meeting. There is no explanation for town meeting.
There are a couple of things. I added an explanation below each of the articles. There'll also be a report to town meeting by the planning board on the hearings you held. And if you want, we can try to submit a written version of that report. Or you can do it verbally at the...
The report of what?
Report of the action of the planning board in the performance of their duties regarding zoning bylaw changes.
Ken, is your mic on?
My mic is on, yes. Don't stray. The planning board has to report to town meeting that they held a public hearing on the bylaws.
Oh, on these bylaw changes?
Correct.
Thank you, all right. So I'll just make a comment that, since I've been in Wareham and gone to town meetings, and I've been on the redevelopment authority, I've seen articles go up in front of town meeting when all that pops up on the screen is the article. And for a lot of people in that meeting, it's the very first time they're seeing it, and they don't get much explanation. And the article's sponsors get five minutes to explain what they're doing and why they're doing it. And I'm not sure that we need to do that here. Maybe in the landscape buffer, when it might be helpful. But I think that we should consider taking advantage of that to make sure that we're clear, and there's clarity and understanding on the behalf of the people seeing it. I know in some of the more contentious issues, it's... Well, for example, when the Minot School was done, they actually did a 10-minute presentation after getting an extension from the moderator that was very detailed, explaining what was going on. And every article has that opportunity. So if we think that these explanations are clear enough, and everyone will understand them, and will get them passed, then fine. If we think there may be some confusion, and I get scared of the one with the numbers. I remember Raquina trying to do his changes on the square footage. You remember?
The tables, right?
And it went totally off the rails. And there were amendments coming down to the moderator left and right, and no one understood what was going on. So, I mean, I'm glad you've done this. This is good. And we have time. But I'm just gonna throw that out there, that we may want to consider that, especially on this one. And I'll be happy to work with you and do it, you know.
Yeah, that's right. We have to figure our game plan in the presentation at town meeting.
The... My experience is if you sit there and rattle on for five minutes, you're gonna put people to sleep. And best to keep your explanations brief and concise, and...
If you make it in 30 seconds, all the better.
And if you can, you know, by all means, answer any questions that come up, but keep your explanations brief and to the point.
Oh, don't get me wrong, George. You saw me give a presentation last week. I friggin' ran through, so, I mean, but I...
But we all nodded off.
I set myself up for that, didn't I?
And for the folks at home, I'm just pulling this light.
No, it's all good. It's all good. These two are very self-explanatory. So...
You're worried about the table being potentially confusing when people try to figure it out.
So...
You know, article, the consumption article, that's probably gonna have some debate because of the subject, but by and large, I don't think town meeting will have a problem with it.
And you're prepared for that, right?
I will be.
That was good. Vape up.
My god, hell, at one of the meetings, 'cause I said, "He must be smoking too much." Oh, well. Do you want to vote on these, Ken?
They'd be fine.
Individually, or?
As a group.
Am we just voting on... We already... We already...
I bust my brain to come up with some sentences, and you ignore them.
Which ones of those?
Half joking, but isn't it clearer to say, as we voted at the last meeting, "To repair, washing, and towing only of vehicles to be serviced," which Mr. Reptis seconded? Your call.
Well, towing for service is what he's... And...
Yeah, but it could be any service anywhere.
Any explanation is towing vehicles for onsite services considered a... Would that cover what you... Does that...
Why change the approved sentence in the minutes?
Because it gets us into more trouble when you're too specific. What if somebody's towing, doesn't have a tow operation, but is towing to another location for a service? What happens is if they're not onsite, they potentially are in violation of the zoning. So there's a... When the explanation tries to clarify, it's...
I withdraw my question. All right, let's go. Let's move on. No worries, let's move on.
The whole thing's kinda silly, because, you know, the truck's gonna tow somebody there, drop the car, they're gonna leave, you know? It's not a towing company.
See if I help you out again.
Pull out that onion skin paper and start drawing something.
Any issues? Can we get a count of voter confidence? A motion to approve the explanations for town meeting articles?
Motion to approve the explanation for town meeting articles?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations, Ken.
We still may want to talk about the presentation to town meeting, as to how you want to do that.
The... I do have... I did take some notes during the hearings, so... A lot of them had to do with the ones that we removed. Item D, master plan and Wareham Congress proposal.
So...
I think that's just a placeholder that shows that's still outstanding, correct?
That's correct.
What's that?
The covenant release.
Covenant release for Jordan Road, Jonathan Way, Heingrove Estates.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I made that presentation last week. I asked everyone to think about it, and I wanted to bring it back up at this meeting and talk a little bit about how we move forward. And I know it was a lot to absorb, and I don't have a lot of expectations for tonight. But one of the things I think is most important is that this board acknowledge, and not our heads up and down, that we understand that we are the owners of the master plan. And until we do, and I'm not sure that's the case, so that's why I want to ask. Does everyone understand that and agree with it?
Why don't you finish, 'cause I have a question about the definition of the master plan. I see this document, you know, this one. When I'm reading it, I'm reading a to-do list. A to-do list for developing a master plan. So it's just a matter of defining our terms more accurately so we know what we are dealing with. And thanks for the great job of bringing all this, and your summary. We are five people with... Volunteers with day jobs. It's a huge undertaking, when you look at this from 30,000 feet. And much of the... It's a great vision statement of what to do in developing a master plan. And although we are charged with the responsibility for developing the master plan, none of us are real planners in that sense. Nonetheless, I'm sure we're all willing to dig into it. But as I've been reading this, and your summary, and all, and these other documents, I kept asking myself, where do we start? And what I... In response to your question of a moment ago, I'd like to see this as a to-do list to develop a master plan. I don't see it as a master plan, per se, because it doesn't tell us what to do. It doesn't say anything. Secondly, it doesn't say anything specifically. It talks about land use, and about economic development, and so on. How do we tackle land use, the five of us here? What do we do?
Ken, may I?
Got you back and forth, because we're both rowing in the same direction.
See, I look at it a little differently than that. The town is the owner of the master plan in terms of what goes in there. We are the ones that have to approve it. And we are the ones that have to have a process to update and change it. We don't have to own the tasks. We own the document. We own the responsibility of making sure there is one. That's what I think the planning board owns. Now, the original, the document that we're looking at now, can't help me here, was developed over two years ago by that outfit that starts with an S.
The Regional Plant Agency, SERPED.
SERPED. And did we pay them to do that?
Yes, we did.
And we've had public hearings on it since. So from my perspective, we don't own... We may own some of them, some of those things. But I look at all those tasks in there to be spread out across all the Wareham agencies. And for people to... For organizations and department to sign up and take ownership. And that's one of the... If we had a master plan in place, that would be one of the first things I'd want to do, is define who the owners are. So that's just my definition versus what I heard you say, so...
That's reasonable.
Would you think the first step in this, then, would be to have the Congress that you were talking about come into fruition? that you were talking about come into fruition? I mean, if all, if all the boards are gonna have to own the tasks, I would think that would be, you gotta have an army before you can give marching orders.
I look at it just the opposite. We can have marching orders. I want to say this right, Michael. I don't know how we can go to other agencies and ask them to sign up to do something in an unapproved document.
No, I don't think that, that's what I was getting at. But I would think a reasonable first step would be maybe at the very, at the very basics, have the head of each board come together for a meeting and say, okay, you know, we need to adopt the master plan, we need to start working with the contents and doing what we're supposed to be doing. Open to suggestions. How do we accomplish this? Do we put together workshops, you know? How does it all come to fruition?
Well, that's...
And then the heads of the boards come up with some sort of a, of a broad view plan, and then bring the rest of the board members...
Yeah, if you go back to my proposal, this is, once, in my, in my vision, once the master plan was approved, step one was to invite all department heads into a kickoff meeting and say, here is the master plan, take this back to your boards, come back, and come back in a second meeting, and let's talk about the areas that you want to take ownership of, areas that you are in disagreement with, and areas that you want to change.
I think approved is the wrong word there.
I'm sorry?
I think approved is the wrong word there. I think you're asking for a buy-in prior to approval.
Buy-in by, well...
If you're gonna look to these boards to assist in creating the master plan...
Oh, I'm not. The master plan's done.
Forgive me, just for a second. We have to get on the same page here.
Sure, you do.
This is very worthwhile. Section eighty-one D of, what, chapter, what, forty-one?
Forty-one.
A planning board shall make a master plan. What does that mean? So, as I've read this all along, we are responsible for the creation of the master plan with the guidance of the planning director. I could be wrong, and I'm happy, I mean, willing to reconsider, but that's been my understanding all along. And although it's a tremendous task, I thought that making it a responsibility of the, or letting it lie as a responsibility of the planning board gives us some control. And we could then dictate, rather than go around and ask. I mean, I've had very, I've not had good luck getting coordination from the town agencies and other bodies. I mean, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. And I thought that if we could be the, 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 help me, if we could be the funnel, you know, for...
If we could facilitate getting everybody on the same page.
Yes. That I would see as a worthwhile goal. And as I thought about it, I get intimidated by the enormity of the task. When I saw your circle, I mean, that tells you how complicated it is. But I, I saw the planning board, and maybe I'm, I'm off-base, I saw the planning board as, as being the key, the key ingredient here.
I look at the planning board myself as an oversight role. There's not a whole lot, there's not a lot in the master plan that would fall directly on our plate in terms of doing. I look at the role right now that's most important for this town is to get some, to get a master plan process started and get, and using that master plan to get the other agencies in town in alignment. So...
Word agreement.
That's kind of where I meant.
When he talks about, in so many places, when he talks about who implements, in almost everyone, the planning board is listed.
Yeah. It doesn't, but those are suggestions. Okay?
So, I need guidance as to where we're going, you know, where we want, where we want to go.
Then let me divert for just a minute, because when we talk about this approval process, I've talked to a lot of people in the last three, four months that I've been, I've been talking, I've been pushing this idea out and getting feedback. And at the last selectman meeting I went to, I thi, I'm not sure if it was last week or the week before, Chairman Trappiano made the comment that he wanted the Board of Selectmen to approve the master plan. And I've had comments with several people who have said that town meeting should approve the master plan. And in some cities in Massachusetts, they do. The most interesting comment at the selectmen's meeting was from Town Council Bowen, when it got a little contentious about who owned the master plan, when he said, anybody can go approve it, but the only one that means anything is the planning boards. So, that being said, it'd be great to have the, a town meeting pass it. That, you know, that'd be a good stamp of approval and some marching orders that we could hang our hat on. I worry what would happen if they didn't approve it, when, how we'd move forward there too. But that's, these are things that we can continue to talk about and move forward at the same time, so.
The, a previous Board of Selectmen took issue with a certain section of the previous master plan, so they went to town meeting and voted to change it. But maybe that was because the planning board wouldn't do it, I don't...
It could have been. Very, I've, I've talked with some old colleagues of mine who, actually, one of them getting a lot of feedback from, he's in New Hampshire, and he's had similar situations. And in, in New Hampshire, the law's the same, planning board owns it. So, we can, we want to get everybody signed up. There's no question, I'm not afraid of that. I'm not afraid of it at all, but I want to start moving forward. So I think the most important thing is that we all agree that, and I'm gonna reword it different this time, Emmanuel, we, we, as a planning board, own the approval of the master plan.
Not the development.
Well, we can hire that out, we can make Ken do it, we could do all kinds of weird things. But you're right, I would never trust myself to be an author.
Well, I think at this point, we, we need to make any corrections to the draft that we feel necessary, right, at this point?
I would counter that with, we approve it now and then put a change and update process in place and, and have people come do updates and changes. I think in my perfect world, we make changes all the time. It should be a very dynamic document that rolls with the times. Our current master plan is, no, I'm sorry, I was looking at another city's. They're ten to twelve years old, generally. I don't, they're, they get out of, they get, they get out of phase, I mean, they get out of reality, or they get out of, out of the times very quickly if they're not used and, and, how do I say this? We don't approve a master plan and put it on the shelf and let it collect dust for fifteen years, which can very easily happen. If we're not gonna use it for anything, then we're wasting our time. I want to use it as the agenda for the Wareham Congress.
Let's say that, again, I, I'm not sure that this is a master plan in the sense that you have guides to take action on various, but let's, let's take, so let's pretend we start. How, is land use, what happens? Land, focus redevelopment and improvements to Wareham Village and Onset Village, the big picture, but what do we do? What's the next step in terms of implementing any of these visions or, or guidelines?
Well, on that score, you talk about the villages. I think this, on that score, we're gonna encourage multi-use, mixed use.
But that's our opinion. That might not be the opinion of another board.
So, what, to, to let me answer you...
I don't think it's difficult about...
No, 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 I'm glad you, this, this is, Emmanuel, this is exactly what we have to do, is talk about this.
Yeah, 'cause I want to move to...
See, I'd like to see, go to the Congress and have that very issue come up. What are we gonna do about Wareham Village? And who's gonna take ownership for it? 'Cause I know the redevelopment authority is very actively looking at ideas for Wareham Village. And, and as a side note, what, the Wareham Village Association, what, you know, do they have input to this? Actually, I don't think they do. But who's gonna take ownership for reaching out to the merchants and finding out what they want? The, I think it should, right now, it's the redevelopment authority, they're taking lead on that. Does the planning board want to get engaged? They should be more than welcome to. But I can guarantee, I tell you right now, the WRA is all over the Wareham Village.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the right approach, if we could break it down into small pieces.
Exactly.
Just as an example, Ken and I have been talking a little bit about Main Street, and we're working on developing a plan to present to you about how residential, commercial, river, water use can all be integrated. But it's, it's, it's biteful, you can handle it, you know, it's, it's manageable for one or two people to work on. Once you look at it from thirty thousand feet with all of these requirements, you've got to start thinking, who's gonna do what?
Well, I think if we take a master plan, and it is at thirty thousand feet, and you start breaking it into pieces, I mean, first of all, there's forty or fifty initiatives in that master plan that it suggests this town should do. If we can get people to sign up for five of them, we will be so far ahead of where we are today. If we could get five agencies to say, we'll be primary on, on, on one of five initiatives, and we get another agency to work with them as secondary, oh my God. That's how, that's how I look at it. The other forty-five, they can sit there forever as far, because the first five will take ten years. But...
That's a start?
It's a start. It's a start.
If I may, I want to make a very personal statement. I'm a developer also. I would not develop in Wareham, because there is no assurance for me that if I invest on Main Street, I have no assurance that somebody is not gonna build a piece of, next to me. And there's no mechanism in this town to prevent the destruction of Toby Homestead. Oh, I've heard all kinds of excuses and reasons, money, the hospital, this. By the way, did it ever come before the planning board, before I joined, the Toby Hospital plan? You know? And if I know that I'm gonna invest money and I'm gonna get a building like the new apartment that Rosebrook placed next to me, I'm not gonna invest my money. So, I suggest, my dear colleagues, as part of whatever we do here, there has to be initiated a design review board consisting of people in, forgive me, architects, landscape architects, civil engineers, people who, even these documents talk about improving the, or assuring the appearance of Main Street and Wareham Village. Appearance means controlling what gets built or what gets taken away. I have felt extremely dismayed at the degradation of Wareham Village and Main Street by the removal of the one remaining iconic building that, that spoke something of the history of Wareham. And here we are talking about a master plan, and I think it's, would we remiss if our consideration did not include imposing, I know that the Board of Selectmen, I think, don't want it, redevelopment authority, I've been, everyone that I've spoken to about the design review committee, I've come against a blank wall. And I think until we have the ability to control what gets built and what gets taken away, all of this is just words.
So let me, let me, can I, can I respond? I mean, 'cause you're setting me up, 'cause I'm, I'm right on board with you. 'Cause what I would expect to happen, Emmanuel, is that if we get, we have a master plan in place, and we have a change and update process in place, I would expect you to spearhead an initiative to make an update to that master plan, to include a design review committee, to come to this planning board and outline why it's necessary, how it would work, and, and how we, how we write it into our master plan. And if you get this board to agree, guess what? It's now in the master plan. Guess what? Now we go to the Wareham Congress and say, we have a new element in the, in the master plan. I'm not sure if it's under land use or, or economic development or where it's at, but we need an owner for it, and we need people to sign up to drive it. And I think that's how we make it happen. That's, you and I are in violent agreement here.
Well, on, on that particular point, if you were going to come up with a theme for the village, or some sort of guideline that would be cohesive, to me, that's what you need.
Yeah.
You don't need to put somebody in front of another board doing another public hearing and, and adding costs and delay to their project. Give them direction before they even put pen to paper.
Sure, you could use the master plan, before you even propose a project for Main Street, refer to the master plan for what we expect.
Isn't that in our new bylaw, or did that get taken out? The, the review, the review process, where a developer or proponent for a project has an informal meeting before they spend all kinds of money and, and...
That's part of the site plan review, Article fifteen.
It's got, it's in there.
Yes.
But we don't have anything to hand them, right? There's no...
We don't. No, no, we, we do need to develop guidelines, but then we need the ability to, to give them teeth. To have the guidelines and everybody, and nobody ignores them. So, so a proponent, when they're starting to think about a project, here it is. And I've, I've mentioned this in the past, and I don't in any way mean we should replicate what Nantucket has, it's just thick, but everybody on Nantucket and other towns, but Nantucket's an extreme example. You know that everything you're gonna propose will be reviewed and approved or rejected. And so we do need the guide, absolutely. I've got a few pages started on it, but hasn't gone very far yet. But we need, we need the enforcement ability, it has to be enforced.
Well, I mean, one of the, you know...
I'll stop, excuse me, I'll stop after, if we had such a document, the Rosebrook apartment building wouldn't be there today, wouldn't be like that. That's, that's my objective.
The...
I don't want to dive down too far into implementation quite yet. I mean, but...
Just keep it in mind.
Well, the thing, I think the point is, is that if we do this right, we'll have a vehicle to start doing these things in an orderly fashion with the partnership and cooperation of other agencies. And all, and that's where this alignment starts to fall in place, so...
From an enforcement standpoint and a execution, that's in our zoning bylaws and in our rules and regs. The master plan doesn't have enforcement or, the master plan is a guide.
Right, right, right.
And if you don't back that up with rules and regs to enforce it or to encourage it, I think encourage is a better word, because...
Absolutely. Am I taking too much time, Michael? But if you look at our, if you look at our principal use table, the, the planning board is maybe involved in only two or three instances.
Special permit, yeah.
So, we have to work through the master, through whatever this process is, we've got to get to this document, to this, and give more teeth to the boards or agencies who, who will, who will be able to implement these, these ideas.
Go back to my presentation, and I talked to the, how we use the master plan on alignment, and how we get that vision in the master plan down to next level implementation documents. And I called out vision plan, land use plan, economic development strategy, community preservation plan, open space, capital plan, housing plan, town budget, town policies. All these things are the next level of granularity that you're talking about, Emmanuel. And, and if they're all starting from a common, common point, they have to be consistent, unless we're just totally off the rails.
I'm ready and willing to go.
Okay, so, I, the, the big question in my mind is, are we ready to approve it now and then solicit changes? Or do you want to solicit changes first and then approve it? Because if you want to solicit changes first, we have to at least adopt a process to do that. How, how, how do we entertain a change?
If I may, sorry, I mean to be, I agree with your second option.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the first one.
I understand that. Anybody want to break the tie?
But let's go back. We acknowledge that we own the approval. I'm gonna, I rephrase that. We don't own the master plan, per se, we own the approval of it. Can, can everybody raise their... Can, can everybody raise their hand on that for me? Say, yeah, that's true, we own the approval of the master plan?
I disagree.
It's not going to make you squirm like you do when, when I ask for a vote.
I don't see any hands going up, and that's, that's what I'm worried about.
You're changing the, the role, this is, we shall make, what does it mean, we shall make a master plan? Section eighty-one D.
Yeah, I, for me, it means we're going to come up and have a piece of document in our hands and say, this is the master plan.
Cause it to be made, sure. Cause it to be made. But, but, but it, again, the semantics can get in the way, and I, I, I don't mean to do that. Let's, I liked your second comment, which is, we, we tackle it, you start, you take the lead, we tackle it, item by item by item, and decide, decide, and maybe we have to break into smaller groups because we can't have these open hearings all the time, I don't know how to do this. We can't do it every night, it's ten o'clock already, or whatever it is. We need to take some time during the week, whenever, whenever, I know we're all working, but it can't be done at night, on Monday nights.
Let me, let me make my case for option one. If we approve the master plan as it is, which has been around for two years, gone through public hearings and a lot of reading, and no one's ever barked on, or barfed on it at all, I mean, it's been, yeah, this is pretty good.
But they, public hearings, or they just, public...
I think there were workshops.
There were a couple of different things, there were workshops, there were public meetings, there were actually meetings with individual boards and commissions. I tried to get to all the boards and commissions in town, that list of the, the, that was shown in that slide, were all the boards that I tried to visit.
We didn't hear from you yet.
And one of the things I wanted to point out as well, before we get to...
Don't ask him.
Is that, have you looked at all the documents associated with the master plan? Because there's an implementation online, an implementation plan, which goes into greater detail on the steps associated with each of the goals of the master plan.
And, and the last, the last comment I make in, in promoting option one is that with an approved master plan in hand, I feel very comfortable on moving ahead immediately on getting the Congress going, with a kickoff meeting and, and with the department heads, and start moving forward on making that an effective tool in our town. I wouldn't feel comfortable with an unapproved one going to that wide of an audience and trying to do approval processes, because, to be honest with you, Ken's done it. It's, it's been done, and it's, it's time to go. That's, that's where I'm at.
So what's the downside by approving the document? What, where are the pitfalls?
I don't know of any, as long as we have an agreed to way to make changes to it. And that's that, I got that, I've shared that one-page document on a proposal on how that may work, but this, we can't approve it without a way to fix it. And maybe fix is the scary word to use, but it's true.
Or modify.
Pardon me?
Or modify it.
Yeah, or, or, yeah, because I guarantee you, as soon as we approve it, someone's going to find something wrong with it. Someone who's read it five times before this.
And we would be, we would be guiding the process?
Yeah.
If anybody wants to make a change, or whatever, they would come to the board.
We would have to make a, we would have to pass that change with a majority vote.
Of the board?
Of this board. And the, I mean, for example, I was, I heard Patrick talk at the selectman meeting, he goes, well, I'm going to get the Board of Selectmen, we're going to gather our inputs, and we'll send our changes over to the planning board. And I, and I kind of smiled when I heard that.
Should have been phrased as, suggested changes.
Yeah, exactly. But if he did that, what are we going to do with him? You know, we don't know, we don't have a process, so regardless, we've got to have a way to change it, but I, I think the way to move is pass it, let's approve it, let's approve a process to fix it, and let's move forward. So, I'm going to go back, does everyone agree by a show of hands that we own the approval of the master plan? Come on? Two, I got two!
We want the approval.
Three, I got three. George, Mike, I can't get you to raise your hand.
Why, Mike?
It's state law.
I, I would like to know why we had previously approved them at town meeting, that's all. Is that somebody's misstep, or was that just a, a...
It was a good effort, but it didn't mean anything.
It was, it was not a misstep, it was an allowed action of the, of town meeting to endorse the, the master plan. And it's something I've done in other towns as well. Every town can be a little bit different, there's no particular penalty to the master plan if it's not followed through in a certain, in a certain way. So if you, so if you think that town meeting is, is a stronger action, I, I think this idea of the planning board taking on that role of, of managing the master plan is, is a great idea.
May I ask, Michael, why, why he, what is your thought about it?
The, the master, the master plan is a guide from the will of the people, the mass, not dictated by a board. You know, we can be the keepers of the master plan, but it has, it really has no teeth. It's a guide, that's all it is. Last, the last master plan, the last one was sitting on the shelf for the last ten years, a lot of, a lot of work was put into it, went to different parts of town, the will of the people, what would you like to see? What would be your recommendations? How would you like to see the future being? It's a guide. And, and the thing is, I, I think that it doesn't belong to a specific board, it belongs to the town. It should be approved by the town, the people, the mass.
That, that's a, a good thought, but when you present, when you present an idea, or a collection of ideas for the future to the mass, you're never going to get consensus. You'll trip over yourself for the rest of your life.
Well, you, you're never going to get total acceptance either by having a small group dictate what the mass is going to do.
Well, it's, it's, you're not dictating, it has no, it's, it's a guide.
It's a, it's a guide, it has no teeth.
It's a roadmap.
I attended a couple of those meetings, there were public hearings where the public was invited to come.
Yeah.
So, they were given the opportunity, and that's what Richard's been referring to. I, I, I'm sympathetic to your, to your view of the democratic aspect of your view, but a horse is, a camel is a horse designed by committee, too. And, and I, I think it would be difficult to, to implement if we have to rely on a broad... They've had, how many meetings were there, Ken? I mean, there were, I went to only two of them, but there were many more, I believe.
That's correct, there were, there were...
So, Michael, in, in response to your concern, I think maybe that alleviates it, because they have had the opportunity. Now, who's going to take the, the bull by the horns, as it were, to make implementations? And I, I think I'd rather it be us, on behalf of the citizens.
I've been there before, I, all I can say is, good luck. You know, I, I appreciate what you're seeing and where you're coming from, but we went through that process before. And, you know, like I said, it wasn't, wasn't nice. What happens later on, when you get further down the road, the will of the people, you get different committees or other small groups have a totally different vision of what the guide says. And of course, they go off on a tangent, and nothing happens.
Well, but wouldn't that where, where the Congress would come into play? Where you've got these committees all talking in the same room?
Good luck.
I mean, eventually, we're going to have to stop fighting with one another and work together.
Michael, you're, your fears are well-founded, it's, it's...
I've been around here a long time.
Well, but that doesn't mean we sit back and do nothing.
I've been around here a long time, no, but the thing is...
I think things change, opinions change. I mean, this isn't the same planning board from ten years ago.
No, no.
The, it always, it always amazes me that, you know, people will throw stones when, you know, and say they're always fighting with each other, not, not you, Mike, but people put out that representation, but they only look at it that way when they don't get their way. Perfect example.
Charlie, you've had a lot of experience with other towns, and you've seen how their planning, master plans are written or implemented, you got any thoughts on this? I mean, this is the time to do this, air all this out so we can move forward.
Well, the only one that I have a fair amount of knowledge of knowing how they did it was Mashpee. As you may know, all the towns on the Cape are not only encouraged, but they have to provide a master plan through the Cape Cod Commission, and supposed to update it every five years, I believe it is. I can remember when the town planner of Mashpee spearheaded it, and the number of months that he personally put in, in terms of putting the documentation together, and the amount of time that he spent with each individual board that was responsible for a host of different sections within the master plan, including the Conservation Commission, Board of Health, their DPW, Planning Board, CBA, Building Department, whatever. And once every board had its opportunity for input, then all of that information was collected and brought back to the planning board for review, to go through the whole thing. And it was only after that that they took a final vote to approve it. I can't tell you specifically all the stuff that's in it, but it was, I, I know from having been there a number of times, how when certain projects came in to the planning board for site plan review, or whatever, subdivision, whatever, and I can remember them saying, well, this isn't consistent with the master plan. Meaning that they were aware of what their goals were, they had set up certain goals within the town, and this was what they wanted, they wanted open space, they wanted, in their particular case, a town center. They wanted a cleanup of their shoreline in terms of nitrogen removal. They wanted to look forward to a town sewer system, and a water system at the time. So there are multiple goals that they set forth, that they wanted to reach toward. And then they went about by adopting certain provisions within the zoning bylaw, and to some extent, in the subdivision rules and regulations, I can't speak for the Board of Health, whereby they adopted certain provisions that spoke to the goals that were in the master plan. But that was only after a collaborative effort of everybody within, not only the, the town government, but also in, from the citizens at large, as to what they wanted to see. Another example of it was, in the last year, Mashpee Commons came into the planning board and wanted to adopt what they call, something space zoning. Ken, you know what it is as well as I do? What's that? Form-based zoning. Entirely different concept than the block-style zoning that we have today, where you establish lot size, and you establish a certain density within a certain block of land in town, or a certain area of town. You look at it more in terms of a combination of uses, and whether or not these uses seem to fit together and so forth. There was a lot of input from the town promoted by Mashpee Commons and supported by the planning board, to have several public meetings, and they did that for six or eight weeks, where people got together, they had charts on the table, they had plans on the table, where people would make lists of what they wanted to see and so forth. Make a long story short on that, they didn't opt to go in with it, because there were too many issues with it. They'll, they'll be coming back. My own take here is that while a master plan has been developed, it's been developed essentially by people not involved with this board, I agree that the, the planning board can be sort of the keeper of it, Mike, you used a good term there, I like that. But at some point, in order to make it functionable, I still believe that it needs the support of the people of the town. Now, Richard, you mentioned, I think, what, a list of fifteen different things within that master plan, that sort of the ideas out there that you'd like to head toward?
There's like fifty.
Fifty. That's about, that's about forty-five too many.
Exactly right.
For a town meeting to adopt. I just started to make a very quick list here as we're talking. One thing in the master plan might be the preservation of natural resources, that's all I've got to say with a small paragraph about that. Promote an environment that will relate to the encouragement of good business coming into town. Promote and encourage affordable housing.
You don't think those things are in there now?
I don't know. All I'm saying is, I would like to, if there are fifty things, I would like to squeeze that list down to something that's much more confined and easy for the town people to say, yeah, those are good things, and if we had that in the town of Wareham, we'd really be moving along. Now, under that, there may be some subheadings that a lot of these other things could be lumped in, but I'm a firm believer in the democratic process and that the people have a chance to say, yeah, this is the way we want our town to look? It is our town, we pay taxes, so why shouldn't we, as townspeople, have a vote on that? I think we should. As far as the implementation of it, if it is a master plan, it is generally shaped, I don't think you necessarily have to come back and tweak the master plan, unless you're going to do it over a cycle, such as five years, or seven years, or whatever you want to do. Once that plan is set, then the way you adjust it is through your zoning and through your subdivision rules and regulations, the conservation rules and regulations, Board of Health rules and regulations, Water Department, Fire Department, Highway Department, Board of Selectmen, they all have their policies and their standards which they like to work with. That's where the changes, in my view, take place. And that, that's how I see the process going forward. So, if I were to say quickly, what should become next? That we all take the whole thing and set it in front of us and go through it and see what we say.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be the first to admit, I've been remiss in doing that, I've been otherwise occupied.
I think it's important, if we don't, I admit to my guilt in not taking that report and going through it page by page to see what's there. But you're asking my opinion, that's my opinion.
Well, Charlie, I, I, I have gone through it page by page and line by line, and then looked at it.
I suspect a lot more than I would care to, and I...
It was painful. Trust me, it was painful. But, um... I want to, I, I'm, I'm, I can't, I need, we need to separate the vision from the implementation, all right?
Absolutely, and that's, that's what I'm basically saying, I'm looking at that document as a vision document, and nothing more.
And that's all, I, you and I are right, right together on that.
But I think in order for it to have any meaning at all, you're going to have people sitting at these tables.
We've already done it.
Yeah, hear me out. You're going to have people sitting at these tables, and the only documents they're ever going to look like at are going to be the zoning bylaw, or the subdivision rules and regulations, that's the only thing they're going to look at. They're going to give two hoots about that draft or that, that master plan. They won't care.
Unless you're giving you, giving them some pushback, they're going to pick up that master plan and say, you say you want to encourage affordable housing, but we didn't mean that, not, not your kind of affordable housing, we want...
That's, that's where, that's where you zero in on the detail of what has to be shown. Now, when you say affordable housing, you've got a good start there with what was put into the Conference Recreational District, where it talks about coming through with a, well, the performance plan, or, that isn't the word for it, it's the performer. That's the kind of detail that you can put into any project that comes forward, say, prove your case.
Sure.
But the performers are a work of fiction, you know that.
But at least you've got them, at least you've got them, but if, if you don't call for it, you know, George, from your experience and the rest of you on the board, and I know from my own experience, that when you go through and somebody comes to me as a, as a guy who wants to do a development, I'll say, Wareham. Okay, let me go get the latest revision of the zoning bylaw and the latest subdivision rules and regulations, and I'll look through them and see what they require. Then I'm going to tailor my design on that basis and what I consider to be good engineering practice. That's what people do. So they're only going to go as far, and the client is only going to want you to go only as far as what that zoning bylaw says you've got to do. So if the detail isn't... only as far as what that zoning bylaw says you've got to do. So if the detail isn't there, or if you don't put in some form a mechanism by where you can expect them to do it, and if they don't get the idea after a couple of times that, yeah, they really do want it, you're never going to get it, and you're never going to move off the first base. It will never happen. So it's got to be incorporated, but separated out from the goals of the vision statement that are in the draft, or in the master plan.
Totally agree. But that, but to your point, those bylaws and those subdivision laws need to fall in line with that master plan.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And right now, we don't, but right now, we don't have one for them to fall in line with.
That's why we need, that's why, in my view, this board needs to take a look at that draft document and say, "Okay, here's what it says. Now, how does it relate to zoning? How does it relate to subdivision review? And are there things that should be tweaked in this document, or are there things that should be tweaked in the subdivision rules and regulations to fall in line with it?"
But that's all implementation. We can do that. You can do that. You, as a citizen, can come to this board and say, "I have a petition. I want to make a change to the master plan. I want..."
No, that's not the way it should go. It should not go. That master plan should be a document that's in place, that the town has adopted, and it stays there. You might look at it in five years or seven years, set yourself a timeframe, but you don't, you don't play games with that. You leave it alone, and you do your adoption through the implementation process. Only when you see that the town is headed in the wrong direction for its overall goal, do you go in and change that.
Let me ask you this. Do you think that the master plan should address marijuana?
No.
No?
No. Not by name.
You don't think that this town, that our vision should have a statement on what our posture and what our culture is going to be around marijuana in our society?
I believe the plan should say that our culture should be that promotes things such as family values, and the kind of things that promote the health and welfare of the town aware him.
In your opinion and my opinion regarding marijuana, accomplishing that goals are pretty far apart, Charlie.
That's correct. So that's why it should not be, that particular aspect should not be in the draft.
In any...
Right. The minute you start, the minute you start to zero in on one item, you've got to zero in on a thousand others. Okay?
Well, plus the fact, the town has done that in the past. They've zeroed, focused in on one specific use and tailored the zoning bylaw to address that, and screwed up the whole area around it, because they didn't like what one particular person was doing. So they messed up a whole district, because...
Okay, let's take it back up a notch.
I'll volunteer.
To?
I don't know whether, I may have a draft of it on my computer. I'm going to go through, and I'm going to find as many of the goals as I can find, and I'll make a list of them, separate from anything else.
From what?
From the draft, of the master plan.
Of the current one?
Right. I'll list them. Let's see how many there are, and what they say. I don't care about sub-paragraphs or anything, just those goals. Goal A, Goal B, Goal D, all the way down.
I've already done it.
I haven't.
I gave it to you.
What, in that presentation?
No. The summary, four-page summary.
Those are all the goals of the master plan?
Seven strategies and the goals underneath each one of them. That's where I'm coming up with my number of about fifty.
All right. I will volunteer to go back and look at that again, under that condition, or set of circumstances, that you've done it already.
Well, we'll talk, I'm going to talk with you tomorrow. We can talk about it then.
Okay.
All right?
All right. But I'm just saying that every one of us ought to be doing that, to be sure that we're comfortable with that. And at the end of the day, all the town boards should be comfortable to the same level that this board is comfortable. Then you can confine it into something that is presentable, take it to town meeting.
And just as you point out, we need a mechanism for change, the same holds true to the Congress. If you create this Congress and it doesn't, seems to be counterproductive or isn't working, there should be a way to dissolve it.
Oh, without a doubt. So, I asked before where we stood on concurrence on the Planning Board having the approval responsibility on the master plan. I got three hands in the air. I got a no from Michael. George, I don't know where you're at.
From the standpoint of presenting it and being the governors of it, I would agree with you, yes.
So the next, all right, so we're four to one, and I think that's enough to move forward. The next question is, is do we approve it now, or do we go through a review and solicitation of comments section? And to that end, I think that's a question that we should put off till next meeting, but we should ask that question and get an answer to it next meeting. What's our next step? That's my proposal.
That's fair enough.
This is very helpful, but didn't, doesn't it make sense to approach this by reviewing...
By what?
By reviewing the existing document and getting comments on it, getting what makes sense, or what is acceptable or desirable, and what is unnecessary. I don't, I think before we vote on approving it, we, the board, should have had a chance to discuss each and every article in here.
Would you like to do a workshop strictly on this?
A workshop, absolutely, or even if we take it a little bit every meeting. I mean, we don't have to do it all at one sitting.
I think if we did it a little each meeting, we'd be here for the next...
I'm sorry, Mike.
I think if we did it a little bit each meeting, we'd be here for the next two years.
Then a workshop. Means you've got to...
Well, I don't think, well, the workshop, you might get two or three sections done in a night instead of one, but...
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Now, do you, and I'm fine with that, too, and I want people to be invested in it. Part of my reason for wanting to move forward quickly is I'm anxious to get the Congress discussion going with the other boards. So let me ask you this. While we're doing this review, do you think it'd be worthwhile to have some workshops with the other board chair people, and float the Congress idea in front of them, float the master plan draft in front of them, and get them, and get that discussion going?
I don't see where you need one to do the other.
Pardon me?
Why do you need the master plan to initiate a Congress?
Um, I think that the master plan will be driving the majority of the agenda, and I can do it with a draft version in my mind. I'm asking, do you guys think we can do it that way? I'd like to get, I want to get the Congress idea at least floated in front of some other people.
A few years back, they developed what was known as the cabinet, and I don't know what they used, on what grounds they used to create that, but it was department heads and, I don't know if it was chairs of committees.
How long ago? About?
Twenty years, ten years. Twenty years ago.
But it was around until probably, what, ten years ago?
No.
Did it work?
No. Well, yes, for the very few times it was held.
Well, the issue that, the problem I had, sitting on this board, was people would come before us thinking they had an approval and had a slam dunk, and we had no idea what took place in the cabinet, what they were promised, if they were promised anything. You know, we have statutory benchmarks we have to hit, and if they don't know that when they come in front of us, or don't realize that, this five-member board may look at something differently than what you sat in front of before.
That's why it needs to be advisory only, and, again, again, if there was a representative from this board and a representative from, say, the Board of Appeals, the representative from the Building Department that was on that, you make your report back as to what's going on, and it is strictly advisory, so that anybody should be told that at the very beginning.
Well, that's it. That has to be instilled, and there can't be any, you know, everything has to be...
Okay. Let's do this. Let's take an action to initiate a off-cycle workshop and address at least two of the seven key areas of our current master plan, and see how that goes. All right? Just two. I'll take the action to put something out on how we might start that. Is that all right?
What's the best day of the week for board members?
Any day but Monday.
I'm talking evening, too, so.
So these aren't working out that well for you, huh?
No, Monday is my health day. Mondays are consumed with meetings all day long, so getting any kind of time off on a Monday is difficult for me.
Well, no, it'd be an off Monday, but, yeah, it would be a long day for you.
But it would still be, you know...
Still be the same day you get hammered with everything else.
Yeah. The best I can get out of town on a Monday, if I'm lucky, I might be able to sneak out at two.
Well, I'm talking a seven o'clock meeting, like we do for Planning Board. Just have it on a week in between.
Yeah, that's fine. That works. I thought you were talking about an actual day.
Or would you rather have it on a Wednesday, or...
If it's at seven o'clock, any night works.
Let's do a seven o'clock off-Planning Board meeting Monday?
Yeah, that works.
And it may not be in this room, because I don't know if this room's occupied, so...
I'll get a room. It'll be here. It'll be 27 or 24, next door. All right? Okay. And then, at the same time, I'll put together a outreach statement that I'll bounce off you guys first, on going to the other department heads, and with the messaging on what we're trying to do, and try to, and get them to engage with us around the master plan draft that we currently have, and get that ball rolling, anyway. I'll lean on Ken and get, maybe we do it in subgroups, because there's a whole bunch of them. Start with the right ones and the right people and whatnot, so. Okay? We beat this a lot tonight. It's been really good discussion, and Emmanuel, I really appreciate your blunt comments. It makes for good...
I appreciate your work on this. Thank you. We've got, you have to move forward on it, and...
Okay. Enough said.
Thank you.
Now, one question. As shown in our earlier meeting on the A&amp;R, this is going to require some input from council. I'd like a vote from the board to ask for permission to speak with town council.
So moved.
Yep, seconded.
Yes.
Made by Emmanuel and seconded by Mike King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
And how did we leave the inspection aspect of it? Are we...
That's probably a little premature, because if there is...
You better be careful when you say premature, George. We're going right out of time.
Well, if the, if council comes back and says, "The applicant is right. They can do this. There's nothing we can do about it," there's no point in having them inspected, because we're stuck with it.
And if council comes back and says...
If council comes back and says, "This should be a Form C," then we can go back and treat it like a subdivision roadway inspections. I mean...
Then we're going to be scrambling for time.
He would have got out of it a lot cheaper, I'm expecting.
No, I don't think you'd have to scramble.
No, if that comes, if that's the case, the A&amp;R gets withdrawn or denied, and you open up a whole new timeframe.
Don't expect town council to make the determination as to whether or not it's an A&amp;R or a Form C.
Why not?
Because it's up to this board to make that determination.
No, but she...
She cited legal precedent as to, she made her case.
He should be weighing in.
If he...
He'll have his opinion, but he won't be making the determination.
Well, I think that's what George is looking for.
I'm looking for guidance that we are in compliance with state statute.
Mm-hmm. We, right, we need his input, because otherwise, we're depending on her input. You know, that's why you have two lawyers and a judge. I don't trust...
Like, that whole discussion about emergency vehicles is not even relevant.
No. That's all fluff. That's all that one.
That's just, that's not relevant.
You know, the one thing that I noticed, can we talk about the pictures? I didn't see, I didn't see a storm drain anywhere.
There isn't.
No, there isn't. He just paved it.
So, again, why would you insist on, every roadway that has been involved with a home site, whether it's one's home or a dozen homes, every roadway that's come before us that I know of, in the year and a half that I've been here, has been inspected for quality of construction by Charlie. Why is this one different?
Let's back up. That's in a subdivision.
But isn't this what we're discussing?
Being as a Form A, no. What we're discussing is, their point is, they want an A&amp;R, a Form A. You can't condition a Form A. You can tell them, "Oh, I'd like to see sidewalks. I like to see this and that." That don't mean spit, because you can't condition a Form A. Only way you can condition that road to have drainage or waive the drainage has to be a subdivision. Am I right or wrong, Charlie? You're right. That's the only way you can do it. And that goes right to the beginning. The applicant knew that from day one. They circumvented every rule and regulation there was. They're going to come in the back door and says, "Well, we got this. It's already done." That's after the fact. No, that doesn't hold water. It really doesn't. So, you know, like I said, nice-looking driveway, hey, it looks good. But that's all it is.
But is that what it's now considered, is a shared driveway? Or is it a road?
I don't... It's still not a road. No. You know, she made a statement that prior to 1951, before zoning, certain things were allowed, or certain things were, so they can build to that standard. Built to that standard, yes, but you take it on the other step, like Charlie said, you own a hundred acres of land. Cut a road in there, you come back, say, "I got a road." It's been, it exists.
He'd probably be better off if he didn't pave it. If he just graded it and...
It's...
And left it dirt.
And said, "Is this sufficient for two more houses?"
Well, it's not two. Let's take it back. Realistically, it's four. These are two more that aren't on this Form A plan here. That's going to be three for us next. So now we're talking, instead of two more homes that are being transitioned back forth on this driveway, there's going to be four. You know, let's look at the big picture.
As I said, there's three criteria, one of three, that they can submit. Certified by the town clerk, it's a public way. On an existing approved subdivision plan, and the other one is maintained by the town, I think.
No, that goes along with certifying it as a town way. The third one is the way in existence that, in your opinion, has suitable access, grade, and drainage for services and so forth. Ken, do you have a copy of that case that she referred to?
Yes, I do.
Could you send me a copy of that? Okay. I'd like to be able to read it.
I think I want town council to read it, too.
Yeah.
She should make available to our town council all of the case law that she presented. How do we respond otherwise?
Well, did she do that, didn't she?
She did that.
Oh, she did.
Yeah, what we do is, we give that information to town council. Town council accepts his own case law, or we have other special counsel for the purpose, if we think it's necessary.
So he has everything that she...
Oh, he will. No, he doesn't yet.
He will.
Can you send that off to him tomorrow?
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of time. And the correspondence aspect I had was due to the position that we were in during the Bay Point incident, where a department head said, "Oh, I'm okay with that," without asking anybody else. And he put us in a bad position, so. That's why I was a little troubled by town police giving letters directly to applicants.
Speaking of meetings, one thing on the agenda that I wanted to get discussed was the October meetings. Right now, the meetings are scheduled on the 14th and the 28th, which is Columbus Day and town meeting. So you don't have a meeting in October, right now. So, you don't have a meeting in, in October, right now.
Which is a good day to submit an A and I.
Yeah, it's a great day.
You want to...
I do mention that. I'm gonna be in Greece October fourteenth. So, there's only me. I won't miss the meeting.
You're gonna have to cancel the trip.
Do I shift to the seventh and the twenty-first?
Anybody got an issue with that?
Seventh is fine.
The seventh and the twenty-first?
Correct.
Seventh, yes.
I suppose we should have a vote on that to change our meetings for October to the seventh and twenty-first, due to town meeting and Columbus Day.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, let me see what I can flip.
Seven, forty, twenty-first is the other one.
You still be in Greece?
I put my agenda away.
They don't have a covenant yet, so we don't endorse the plan yet.
Rules and regulations.
An update, yeah. I had, since we haven't, haven't updated the rules and regulations for forty-B or for subdivision rules and regulations, seemed appropriate to go back over that in some near, near-term future. And when the board feels that might be an appropriate time to take it up.
So, we should propose some changes and then schedule a public hearing?
Correct.
Sounds like a workshop issue, too. I thought we had changed it to what started when you submitted to the planning board.
It's from the town clerk stamps it in.
No, I thought we adjusted that because I know there are some attorneys that feel that that, that is the way to do it, but there's some conflict there.
What she read was, was from the, the rules and regulations and states that, but I'm almost a hundred percent certain that because it's an A and R and because there are twenty-one days, that the filing is when it actually is presented to you as a, as a plan for action.
I think the reason for the extra verbiage is to keep somebody from walking in and just presenting it.
Exactly, exactly. Well, they can do that.
That's why they reviewed and viewed as complete.
Yeah, but to say that it's, when it's filed with that office or filed with the town clerk, if it's filed far enough ahead of time, you don't get your twenty-one days.
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's why I think the official filing, as remember, if you remember years ago, George, with the application for a Philomay, we brought in two applications of the Form A to you. You signed one, and you gave the other back to me, which I had to run down to the town clerk the next morning with your stamp on it. That was the filing date, when, when you actually dated it. That's the way it used to be. That made it pretty, pretty basic.
Then that disappeared, Charlie, and then everybody was saying...
What's that?
That disappeared after a while. Then everybody was coming in and says, oh, I had it stamped in two weeks ago. You guys gonna make a decision tonight, or thank you?
Well, the previous planner tend to let things sit around the office for a while.
But I, I agree, there, there needs to be some adjustment of that language, I think, to make it clear one way or the other, you know?
Actually, the application is not complete as yet because the checklist, the N R checklist was not included with the, the plan.
Oh, just said that then, could've...
Be good, check back, Ken.
It's not a public hearing.
Anything further?
Antetina motion to adjourn?
Second. Well, I'm sorry, was there a Bay Point thing tonight?
No, they didn't submit a covenant yet.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at nine thirty-five.